Want to have this as a resource as well. We are now recording, so it's official. So don't do anything embarrassing. Or you can do plenty of things that are embarrassing and keep this meeting nice and interesting. Um, so we will talk about this as well. I know there's going to be questions about the PPP loan and we will get to that. Um, when it comes up in the section that it comes in. So if you have any follow up questions with that, we will make sure to answer those. Thank you for everyone again for being here today and joining us. This is super helpful for the finance team and for council to be able to kind of get a glance from the congregation. Um, so that way, when the annual meeting comes on February 7th, I hope it is in all your calendars and you are waiting with anticipation for it. Um, February 7th, we'll do this exact same thing again, and that's when we'll vote on everything and answer up any follow up questions that you may have. So. I think it's time to get started. So thank you, everybody already who has turned in stuff for this or who has worked on this to get it. As a functioning document for us. So let's open up to page one, shall we? Worship ministry. So here we have um out and you'll see the D and N's on there discretionary and non discretionary. Just so you are aware of that, pay attention to that as well. Are there any questions or comments or wonderings about the worship ministry that need to be talked about? Wow, really? Also, I have two pages of people. Do you do too? Okay, I just want to make sure we're going back and forth. Okay, all right, seeing no questions. Um, I'm just trying to think if there's anything that we need to talk about. Yeah, Mary or Don, is there anything from the worship ministry part that needs to be talked about? I don't think.
Nancy looks like she's trying. Nancy, are you just unmute?
Oh, Nancy, Nancy. Oh, here, I'll, yeah. Nancy, you'll be unmuted just a second. Okay, you have to.
Oh, here we go. Just gonna try to type it, but um you have a fairly large increase in the durable, the very first thing, the durable sanctuary supplies. Is that for COVID stuff or is that something else you're thinking of?
It's actually, the expense was for the little mini cup, pre field communion cups.
Oh.
So we, we thought we probably were going to still need that in 2021 for a while. So that's why we increased it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other further questions about anything.
Pastor also note in there that an increase was because we're looking at doing some live streaming.
Yes, yep. Some of that'll come out of live stream um equipment. Yes. Yep. Brenda, you had a question if you want to unmute.
What about the um bulletins? Because I see there's still a budget. Are we still doing somewhat bulletins if we're not actually worshiping in person?
So the hope is that we eventually may come back in person in 2021. So we want to make sure we have um a budget for that when we do come back.
Makes sense.
Yeah, thanks for asking. Okay. Any other questions, concerns, smart remarks? Are we good to go to the next one?
Okay, the budget line item pastor is actually for, we've got Sundays and seasons in there because we're printing our own bulletins, right?
Yes, that's correct. So it, yeah, the bulletin part is actually for our Sundays and seasons. Contract that we have because that's where we get all our information to pull for our bulletins. Yes. Yep. And there was an. And no. Oh, there wasn't. No, we didn't increase it. We, we lessened it for this year.
We also had pastor, we also had for uh music contracts because we are doing the live streaming, if you want to call it that. Uh, we had to pay a little bit extra in contracts.
Yes, that is correct too. We had to, yeah, we had to increase a couple of our um contracts with music to make sure we are covered for live streaming. Yep. So we're good there. Oh, thanks for the new people who have joined. Um, thanks for being here. Uh, make sure that if you have a question, you can raise your hand under the reactions button. Or you can put your question in the chat and we'll make sure we're going to go through the sections. Um, and then if there's any questions for each section. So we're just going to finish up with worship ministry right now. And now we're going to go on to resource ministry. Hmm, very exciting. So any questions, wonderings, concerns about resource ministry? Bank fees, copier?
Would it be helpful if we just kind of said those that were over? So if you look at bank fees, you know, we're budgeting 800 instead of 400. A lot of that had to do with our online giving. We didn't know how much it was going to cost. So it's an increase, but it's, it's well worth it to be able to do that. Um, the other big increase was under software maintenance. And again, that's for our database. We had negotiated, Don had negotiated that as part of a package before. So we didn't know the total cost. But that allows Don and Susan and Pastor and Jenny to remotely access our database, which is really super important. So those were the two big increases in that area.
Yep. John, you have a question? Do you want to unmute yourself?
Done. All right. I just want to point out that the, if we take the extra $400 that we're for bank fees. We took in 47,000, over $47,000 in online giving last year. So that factors out for less than 1% of online giving. So in reality, that works off pretty good.
Absolutely. Yeah, online giving was huge. I mean, we added it on as a, as kind of a, another convenient avenue for giving. And it turned out to be one of a, a big priority for us in our way of giving just because of COVID and everything. So, yeah.
Yeah, we, we were, we were doing it way before COVID came. And uh, so we were well prepared when COVID came. So that it was easy for us to switch over.
Right. So we weren't scrambling like other churches were trying to figure that out. Absolutely. Yep. Everything else kind of seems. Kind of where we're at. Any other further questions or concerns about resource? Okay. Um. And that falls under the insurance and okay. All right. Well, let's move on to the next section then, shall we?
Under the insurance, we should let people know that we changed insurance companies this, or this coming year. Uh, we had an increase in insurance, obviously, and uh the uh, our, our insurance agent. Set us up with a different company which reduced our new insurance by several hundred dollars. So that's why it's a little bit different. That one right there.
Thank you. All right, let's go to building. Hmm, I'm sure there's going to be lots to talk about here in building. So um. Anything Mary or Don that needs to be talked about directly right away? Um. John, you have a question?
He?
No, John.
Uh, we are actually down on that. Uh, we budgeted less and the majority of that comes from us. Our, that's what our heating and. Cooling is significant a less because we don't have anybody in the building to open the doors and close the doors. So that's gone down a lot. That's probably the biggest portion. We took off about over $2,000 for, just for that.
But do you also think it's because of our new HVAC system?
That hopefully that has something to do with it also.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just weren't able to measure it this year since uh. We, you know, we haven't been in church, but.
Right.
Obviously, the doors are not opened and closes as much as what they have in, in the past either.
Right, correct. Correct. Um. I mean, snow plowing is always a general guess, you know, we just, because we just never know. You can talk about them. I'm muted. Here comes Jenny.
Just a general update on the um. Snow plowing, we did have to find a new company. Um, and thank you to Sean for helping with that. Um, so the, the prices did increase, but that was actually across the board from a lot of different places. Um, but they hopefully will do a better job of clearing the whole parking lot too. So, John, I saw you had a question.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up with the telephone, internet and web hosting also. So there's been. Obviously, some talk about trying to go move towards Comcast because our current internet wires not. Been able to handle our volume that we're doing because of the live or because of our streaming. So we're looking into that and we expect that to go up.
Yeah, so oops, sorry, hang on. There you go. Um, we are looking at towards Comcast. We have Comcast um connecting to our building as we, not as we speak. But hopefully by the end of February, that will be connected to our building to have Comcast set that up. Um, our speed at church bogs down when Molly and I are there. We are currently at seven.
That's the speed.
Seven, just one digit, seven. Um, so in order to live stream, once we are back in person, we definitely need to have. More upload and download speed. Um, so hopefully um that will be better than that. And there's still more, more coming with that as well. And um hopefully maybe by the annual meeting, I'll have a little bit more information on that as well. Um.
Yeah, Jenny, I was in.
Install, there will be an installation fee, just like there is normally with any kind of um. Oh, we did not have to budget, or I'm sorry, we did not have to pay for any of the construction. So in order for Comcast to bring the internet from the street, literally the street to our building. Um, did not cost us anything and we had originally been quoted $8,000 for that. So um, that's a very good, we don't have to pay anything for that. So. Um, we have a couple of questions in the chat.
Why is our electricity so high?
You're on mute still.
Oh, I know, but.
Um, why is our electricity so high?
Mary commented.
Mary commented on that. We budgeted 11K last year, but only had it 6,200 in expense. Because we had, uh, we thought the building wasn't being used, but also due to our new HVAC system, we were only budgeting 9K this year. And then Nancy Richter also, oh, Mary, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just gonna say it could be lower next year, but we, we don't know for sure if it's because the building wasn't in use or the HVAC. So we dropped it, but not down to 6,000.
Question, question. Also, on electricity, you can notice in the past, we've spent 93, 95, we're, we're assuming in 2020. Whose electricity bill is going down? So we assumed that it was going to go higher. And since we spent less, we figured we'd cut it back because we are going to open up this year. So it's going to go back to having doors opened and closed a lot more than what it is.
Thanks, John.
And on the sanitation question, Jenny, um, last year, we, if you look at what our actual expense was for sanitation, it was higher than what we budgeted. Um. I think there was some confusion the year before because we had received a grant. And so that was in as a credit for us. And so I think we just miscalculated in the budget of what it was. So our actual costs were almost 2,200 last year. So that's why we increased the budget for sanitation this year. It would have been nice if the sanitation company had cut our costs because our garbage went down, but it didn't work that way for actual expenses.
Um, and just a comment on the electricity, electricity um bill, Darrell and Don commented. If you look at the past few years, an actual expense and 9K number is not too far off, which is actually one of the reasons why I think we talked about lowering it as well. Well. Okay, I'm going to go off, unmute Molly, so you can go on.
In the same room, I know. Um, okay, so that takes care of all that. Um, let's go to payroll. Um, and here, Donna or Mary, do you want to say anything upfront about this?
We apologize that it looks so confusing when you look at the numbers. Unfortunately, or fortunately, when we applied and received the PPP loan, we had to track our payroll a very specific way. Um, so we had to pull out because we couldn't use the PPP loan for employer federal tax or employee federal tax. So we had to pull that out and track it that way. Um, I mean, if you look at the overall numbers, our payroll was down, you know, because we didn't have an organist. Um, it was up for office manager because we overlapped with Tori and Jenny. Um, so you know, again, we apologize. It's so confusing. Susan will go back to tracking it the way it was last year. Um, so the numbers will match up better, but sorry about.
And Mary, that'll be when we go back, you know, we're going to stay with, with this way until we find out if we have to do a PPP or anything like that.
We don't, we don't qualify for the new PPP loan. So we, um, the, one of the criterias for the new loan is that your, your income has to be down 25%. Year over year for any one of the quarters last year. Um, while we were down 17%, which is a lot, um, it doesn't meet the criteria. So we won't be able to apply for one in this round. I don't know what else there will be, but.
Yeah, so that's something that we definitely have to pay attention to because, sorry if I missed it, but without the PPP loan, we would have been 20,000 in the hole. Um, so we're grateful for that, which means that we're really going to have to be careful this year. Um, if especially if we don't qualify, qualifications change. Hopefully then maybe we can apply for one, but right now we do not qualify. So that's going to be something that um we'll need to communicate to the rest of the congregation. Um, so they can just be aware of how much that loan helped us last year.
Um, there is so written into the um, the payroll costs, a 2% increase recommended by our um. Support team. Yep, staff support for Tori, for Sandy and for Donna.
Yeah, not Jenny.
Jenny, oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh, Jenny, I'm sorry. Um, if you recall, years ago, we voted to say we would do, you know, a raise every other year, one year for the pastor and one year for all the other staff. So um, that was the recommendation from staff support, supported by council and the finance team. So you will see those small in, you know, increases, but an increase for their great work. Um, insurance costs for Jenny and pastor went up a little bit. Um, Susan, do you remember the exact number? I want to say it was maybe five, $600. It's hard to tell on this spreadsheet. I apologize. I wish.
I think you're right, Mary. It was about that. Yep. Okay. All right, um, any other questions or concerns about payroll? And or understanding the PPP loan and all that fun stuff? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on um to faith development ministry. On page, what? Page three. Say the mission trip, adult education. Yep. Things in there. Christmas program. Let's hope we'll be able to do one again this year. Um, confirmation, Sunday school, everything's kind of pretty standard and straightforward. A lot of it is curriculum for those things. So none of that really changed much. Um, all right, no faith development ministry comments or concerns. So let's move to support ministry. Uh, mileage, continuing ads, conferences. Pastoral discretion, discretionary. So that was called something before. Um, but it's that, just so you can be clear, that's things that um I've spent on taking a member out to coffee or um. Bought a gift card for someone to say thank you or um things like that. Possible book for our library, things like that. So.
And certain things like continuing ed for pastor, pastoral discretionary and mileage, those are all contractual for pastor. So they're, yeah, they're non discretionary.
Right. Yep. Yvonne, you raised your hand. Go ahead.
I was wondering, um, I see year of renewal is in here with some monies for this year. I was wondering where we were at with that whole thing.
Ah, great question. Um, we have been on hold for that just because um the next step where we left off was going and talking to. Um, employees and members of our community that have been working, maybe small businesses and that sort of thing. Um, my hope is maybe by this spring when we can, if we, if we move to phase two, the year of renewal, we'll be able to start meeting again. We'll probably have to have one or two meetings just to kind of regain where we left off and then hopefully be able to kind of venture out safely. That's my thing is I don't want to put anybody in um danger, quote unquote. If they're not comfortable going out and talking to some of those employees. Um, but that's our next step. We did the congregation. Now the next step is to look outward at kind of our community and who's there and kind of where they're at and what they're feeling and what they're needing. And then comparing their needs to what we offer. Then our third step then is going forward. I am now on the year of renewal committee at the synod. So um, once things start kicking up again there, hopefully then we'll be able to start. Kicking up again at St. Mark. So it is not, we left it on there intentionally. So we can, we can intentionally get back to it. Yep. Any other questions or concerns about support ministry? We have some money in there for stewardship. Um, you'll learn more about it at the annual meeting, but we are going to be doing a year of stewardship. Um, because of the class, we were a part of at Luther Seminary, we're going to be doing a stewardship campaign for the year. It's called, it's the little things. Um, and it's kind of going to be like advent boxes, but there'll be an experiment each month. And so a little bit of that money is going toward. Um, some of the supplies that'll be um offered to members for those monthly experiments, which are now however. Oh, however, yes. Um, we got a $700 grant from Luther Seminary specifically for this. Um, so majority of that money, actually all that money was spent on Amazon to get the supplies. And the stewardship money that we are using for some of this budget. Is for one of the experiments where we offer. I don't want to tell you too much about it. I don't want to, I don't want to tell you too much about it because it's very exciting. But um, you'll understand it once we flush it all out and you'll get kind of a layout of it. But it's, we have all the supplies right now on my dining room table. We have probably eight or nine Amazon boxes covering my. Covering my dining room table right now with all the supplies. So um, we will be putting those together, assembling probably three months at a time. And then um having pickup and drop off dates for it. So it's going to be a super exciting year to make sure that stewardship kind of stays at the forefront. Of our mind and how stewardship can look in many different ways. So stay tuned. It's going to be awesome. It's going to be awesome. So there's support ministry. Let's move to outreach manage ministry, Oringa benevolence. Dave has a question. And then Yvonne, you're next.
So my question, my question was just looking at the uh St. Paul area senate benevolence. It looked like uh we had basically double what we did the year before. And about $3,000 more than the year before that. I'm just, can you explain the, the increase from what we budgeted of $10,000 to the actual expense of 12,006? Does that make sense?
John, you want to, there you go.
Well, basically, uh, what we are doing and we have done for a number of years now is we base what we give for benevolence to the senate on the amount of giving. And we do it's 5% of what comes in on the collection plate is what we do. So the difference is that we had a larger amount of giving this year.
Well, and in the past, if we were in the hole, we weren't able to do our benevolence. Our financial guidelines are if we're more than $5,000 in the hole, we don't pay benevolence. So that's why you see some of the lower numbers like for 2019 where we were in the hole for a good part of the year. We made it up at the end of the year. Um, but this year, because we had the PP loan, PPP loan to help pay for payroll costs. Um, and everybody was very generous. We were able, we weren't ever in the hole until kind of towards the end, we were a little concerned. But so we were able to continue our benevolence, which was wonderful because other churches couldn't do that. So.
Plus, plus the fact the budgeted amount is based on the pledges that we get too, right, Don?
That is correct.
That way, we take 5% of the pledge that we get and that's what we budget because we don't know we're going to get anymore.
No, thank you very much.
Yvonne, you have a question and then Maggie after Yvonne.
I'm wondering about the Oringa money that is budgeted 750 that was not apparently sent or used. Can somebody explain that?
That's discretionary.
Well, yeah, well, we, they, they did such a great job of fundraising. We originally, when Susan had to write the check, there, all the fundraising wasn't in. And so she did use a portion of that, but by the time all the money came in at the end of December, um, the fundraising team had raised enough to cover what that was sent to the St. Paul senate. And there's actually $200 left in there, just um designated fund. So we didn't need to use it.
And that's, go ahead, Don.
And that is there just in case the fundraising does not raise enough. Uh, it's just a cover in case we get it go under.
Right. And so that'll be something that we pay attention to. That is, if it is, if that's a big fundraising um opportunity that our church is seeing as an option. And we can always check back in later to see if it's something that we need to hang on to, or if we know that fundraising wise, it'll be a good source of giving for us.
And we've been very lucky over the years. We've not used any of that money because we have had enough in fundraising. Uh, this year we were a little concerned because we have a taste of Tanzania that we were unable to have that event. Uh, so that uh reduced it. But luckily people stepped up and gave additional money towards Tanzania. And so we didn't have to do this. They also, in the past, we've done the quilts for Tanzania. And uh, this year we weren't going to be able to, you know, do that until uh Jenny figured out how we can do. Uh, find the quilts, tickets for the quilts, but doing that online. So we got a lot of money coming in that way. So that was uh, you know, an interesting way of taking care of the situation without uh, or without being able to get together.
Yep, yep. Um, so there's definitely ways. And I think as we can see, knowing that fundraising goes well for this, that can be something that we look at for next year too, if we need to hold on to that. Or not. The other thing too is for it's the little things, there is going to be um a stewardship connection to that in October. Just so you know, so that'll be another fundraising opportunity. We planted that in because that's a big ministry that we give to. Put that in with, with it's the little thing. So they'll be giving from that. So stay tuned. Maggie, yes, Maggie had the question next. Go ahead, Maggie.
Thank you. Um, I would like to propose that if we have money in that account, we just transfer some of that. Thank you. Um, I would like to propose that if we have money in that account, we just transfer some of that to Lutheran Social Services. Use the money and put it towards something local. I really like that idea. It's just a suggestion.
A good one.
And I think, I think the reason we haven't been used using it and stuff like that is uh because we've always been uh towards the end of the year, a little bit uh a little tight and all this other stuff. Uh, we haven't used it. It's just a way of making it easier for us to uh sort of try and be a better budget uh in line a little bit. But I think, you know, we could use it, you know, for if we have money available towards the end of the year, I think we could use it.
Absolutely. I think that's like I was saying earlier, definitely if we didn't necessarily need that money because we raised enough through fundraising, then we can figure out what to do with that money. I think we should absolutely do something with it instead of just sitting on it. Right. I think that's a very good point, Maggie. So thank you. Um, Nancy put a question in the chat that says, is there a place where we record the total giving that we do? Are we near 10%?
Nancy, that actually shows up in the annual report. I'm assuming um Jenny and Pastor are probably working on it, but we do compile something in the annual report that says, here's our benevolence, Taste of Tanzania, um all the target cards that Pastor hands out. Um, you know, anything that we do, um the the great stuff that Virginia and Jim do out in the community. Um, you know, the the money that was raised for the families. So all that is added up together with in the benevolence report in the annual, in the annual report.
Good question. Okay. Any other outreach questions, comments, concerns? And that's it, really?
Nope, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so same question for Lutheran Social Service. There was $150 that wasn't sent. I'm not sure the rationale behind that, but maybe somebody could explain why that wasn't shipped off. I'm not sure when it is or why or whatever.
So did we designate that money, Mary, last year because we went to the gala thing of giving? So that went to the tickets and stuff of buying that. And since we didn't go to that this year, I know there was an opportunity to give. It just kind of I think was missed. Um, but um, we will make sure that Lutheran Social Services stays on our radar this year. Um, we actually are going to be having someone from Lutheran Social Services. Um, that's, I'm in communication with Julie right from there right now um about coming and either doing like a adult ed series or coming to preach or just to do a Zoom conversation just about our connection with Lutheran Social Services and how wide that outreach has spread. Um, and so there will be some educational things on Lutheran Lutheran Social Services specifically this year. So it'll become more of the forefront. So we can figure out kind of how we want to designate to giving to them. Yes. Good question.
Okay, now do we want to talk about what we anticipate have or coming in this year?
I mean, sure, you mentioned it. Now we have to talk about it.
Yeah, well, we we always have to.
Yes, we do.
Let people know that uh it was very different this year, obviously, because we did it with our pledge cards and all stuff like that. Uh, and we only received 32 pledge cards, which is a little bit below what we normally do and all stuff like that. But at this moment, we anticipate uh what people have pledged is uh $1,850 a week coming in. So it's going to be a little bit low, but I know, you know, in the past has been what we uh did promise and all sort of stuff has always been low. Uh, it's, I think John and I were talking about this. It's very imperative, you know, and helps out when we start doing our budget and all stuff like that to have an idea of what people uh anticipate that they're going to give. Uh, even if you wanted to say, I'm not going to be, I don't know what I'm going to give, but you turn in a pledge card so that we know, you know, what your thoughts are and stuff like that. Uh because it's, it's hard to figure out a budget and stuff like that without having an idea of what we think we're going to be getting in.
Right. And, you know, we talk about this every year that we, just like we all have a budget from home um that we know that we can work through. So we know what we can get and what we can't get. It's the same thing for the church. Um. So we did, Jenny did create an online Google form for pledging this year, which had a great response, I think. We did put the link in here and I think we'll make sure to.
Yeah, you don't.
As well. It's on the website. Yeah, so people.
That helped out quite a bit. I think if I was looking at it, I think we got about uh 25 people that did it online that helped out. And then there were a few other ones that, you know, turned in a pledge card uh in their given and all this other stuff. So we would have been in really deep trouble if Jenny had not done that. So.
Right. Um, we actually had 28 people um fill out the form, just to be clear, just saying. Um, but anyways, um, we've had to adjust a lot this year, but again, these are things that are, we're going to carry forward with us even when we do gather together again. Online seems to be an easy access for a lot of people. So having an online pledge card that people can just click on and fill out and turn in versus physically bringing it in um is going to help a lot. We also just need to be remember too that um our budget is um not crazy different um from last year. But again, last year is funny to compare to. So we just need to be aware of that going in. We don't know when we're getting back together again. Um, but we're remaining hopeful that we will. But now that we're in this, we have lots of opportunities um to gather online, to give online, to worship online. I mean, we've kind of stretched ourselves. Um, and it's been hard and it's been difficult and it's been not fun or ideal. But um we've done some remarkable work this year regardless of um the pandemic. And I just hope that we can maintain that, especially knowing that we can't lean on a PPP loan again this year. Um, I think that's really going to help us um remind us to stay focused. John, I see you have a question. If you want to unmute.
I want to ask Don to redo the pledge thing. You said 32 and $1,850 a week has been pledged?
That's correct.
A month.
No, that's a week. $1,800 a week.
$1,850 a week is $96,000. Our budget is 280,000. So that's basically a third of our budget. So this is a huge leap of faith.
Yeah, it is.
I see we have 35 people on the chat here. So I hopefully every one of them has filled out the card.
Yep. And if you haven't, we provided the link in the chat. So you can just click on that, turn in. I, we also got some people that did turn in their pledge cards. We did see some increase as well. So we're grateful for that and hopeful for that. Um, but we're just, we were, I want to so badly steer away from the end of the year cry for help. Um, it's something we rely on every year. Um, and I know that for people's budgets, they kind of have to wait till the end of the year to say, okay, well, we have this much money left over so we can give some to the church. And I totally understand that. But um not knowing if we're going to have enough money each month to get our bills paid um makes us all a little anxious. Um, and somehow we do it, but it would be good to know that we can do it. So I know, um, I hope this um year, this stewardship campaign that we're going to do will help people to understand stewardship a little bit more and what it means for our church and for our lives as stewards of God's blessings. Um, you know, and I always use that image where if you lay out all the things that you pay for, um, you know, whether it's mortgage or car or phone or electricity or whatever, where does Jesus fit in? Above cable? Right by your phone? I mean, but it's, it's, I mean, that's like a slap in the face reality. Um, but it's true. I mean, how do we have all those things? So just to kind of think about that. So Yvonne, your question. Oh, sorry. You have a question. Hold on. When can we worship again in person? When we can worship again in person, sorry. When we can worship in person again, I believe I heard live streaming of the services will continue. Did we add live streaming costs to the plan for ministry? Yes, we did. Um, so we are, we have met with um someone from Our Saviors who does live streaming and was um a tech person over there. And he was the one that helped them get all the equipment they need. So we know the right camera to get. We know the right hookup to get. It's not going to cost $10,000. Praise the God, praise him. Um, it's probably going to cost between 1 and 2,000, but we factored that in. Um, and um we have, we have ourselves covered through CCLI for all the right um covering. So we aren't, we aren't copyrighting anything. Um, Jenny also went to a copywriting um seminar that the synod put on and we're covered there. So we're good there. We're not. Um, so when we do come back together, we will have live streaming happening, happening. So if you can't come to church, you can still look online and watch us live. Um, and then those will be posted on Facebook and YouTube. So those are the two avenues in which we'll post from. Um. Mary, where did you put that from? Where is that?
Well, and some of the money, there's some obviously under the music contracts. Um, then there also we transferred 10,000 into um our capital resources. And that's where we've been trapping COVID expenses, but also where we were going to um offset these new costs of the equipment would come out of that as well.
Thank you. Capital resources. The other thing that we purchased and we actually just made the purchase is we got another computer like Jenny's, another Apple computer. So um Jenny and I will both have work laptops um accessible to us since we've been having to work from home a lot because of our internet. I don't want to talk about it too much. Huh. Um, but that'll also be nice that we will have two very reliable laptops um to use for live worshiping or live streaming or anything like that. So um and those will stay with the church regardless. So, but Jenny and I aren't going anywhere. Don't worry. We're not going anywhere. I've, I've actually threatened Jenny um to not go anywhere for a very long time. So we're locked in and loaded. So we're good there. I still have work. I still have words with Tori, you know, but it's fine. Um, so that's capital resources is kind of where a lot of the COVID expenses and those added funds will be coming out of. Um, and like I said, that computer was just ordered. Jenny and I sweat a lot clicking make purchase. But it's going to be great. And I'm really excited just to be able to have that access to know that we're not tied down at the office with our questionable internet for right now, which hopefully will change by March. Fingers crossed. So yes, when we do meet again um in person, let's talk about that really quick, just so you guys can be aware. COVID team met last week. Um, as you guys probably know, um, it's a week to week. Um, changes are happening week to week and it's going forward and then we're taking two steps back and then we're going forward. And then, you know, the vaccine coming out is a great thing, but then you know, the numbers are still kind of high because of Christmas and New Year's exposures. And so we're, it's this dance that we're playing. Um, hi, Winter. Sorry. Okay. So um we are um going to be sending out just kind of our minutes from that meeting. We are going to meet again February 23rd. So the end of this month. Um, hopefully we will know more by then. We'll kind of get a better grasp of our understanding of the vaccine and what that means. We know that Walls has now opened up restaurants, which is wonderful. Um, but we are still kind of being cautionary right now as far as how long we're in the building together and our air exchange and that sort of thing. Um. We, my anticipation is that um by spring we'll be in phase two, which we were going to go to, but then we had to back off because numbers increased. So by spring phase two means we will be meeting in person um for meetings. Um, we'll be able to have group meetings inside the church. So AA will be able to meet again, ministry teams, council, all those will be able to meet inside the church again. Um, and then based on how that goes, we'll be able to then move hopefully quicker based on how this whole thing goes. So we are remaining so hopeful and we are eager, super eager to get back together. We now have the cleaning resources that we need. So when we can make those changes, we can make it. We don't have to wait on getting those um those things in line. We're, we're kind of ready and planned. Um, Dave, I know you're part of the COVID team. Is there anything you wanted to respond to with that or did I cover it?
I think you pretty much hit everything right on the head. Um, just using guidance, you know, uh I, I don't think any of our churches in the area are open. I know uh um Good Shepherd had some issues of of COVID going through their congregation. Um, even though they only had about 20 or 30 people meeting at a time, I heard that through the grapevine. So yeah, there's been some things going on.
Yeah. Yep. So again, just because, you know, things are reopening and um COVID is still very much a thing. And now with this new strand that could be coming to, we just, again, we're trying to be safe. And um I know it's not fun and I know it's not what you want to hear. It is not what I want to say. I promise you. Um. Will worship look different when we gather again? Good question. Um. When we gather again, if we meet, um, it'll probably be starting off at 25%. And with that, we may have multiple services because we have the cleaning, we would probably have an hour or two in between. But there probably won't be a lot of fellowship time right away at the beginning. You know, we'll probably not have to come to church and then probably have to leave so we can clean it and air it out. So the next group can come in. So we're just being safe that way. Um, but we are going to accommodate as best we can. Also just realizing me and Jenny and our safety because I'm coming up now on my, even though I had COVID, now my three months is up. So now I could catch it again um as a possibility. Um, so we just need to be aware of how much our staff and music people are getting exposed to because they would have to be there for both services. So that's a lot of exposure for them too. So we just want to make sure that we are being smart um and safe for the congregation as a whole. So um, I'm on church, you need to sign up for service. Yes. Um, we probably will do that. When we do the 25%, we'll probably have to have a sign up for who can, who, for signing up for 25% capacity for each service. So hopefully then we'll reach. But we'll still do live streaming um to make sure. So even if you don't get on the list for that week, um, there will be an online availability for you to watch it online as well. So like I said, we're going to be getting that camera and the computers that'll hook right up to our sound system, which is brand new too, which we've rarely gotten to use. Um, so you'll have good sound. Um, we'll have good video. We'll have good internet by then. So there will be no issues as far as connecting online if need be. So it is going to look different for a while. I mean, that's just a given. But let me just tell you, we have adapted very well to the changes that we have made. I am so impressed with the, how people have been able to figure out access online and watching and commenting and getting their their pledge cards or their giving in. We are, I just, I cannot say enough. This church is a utopia. I tell you, I tell it to Jenny all the time. So um, thank you for your patience with us as we figure this out um and your understanding and um just know if you're frustrated, we are too. We very much are too. And just because I'm positive and, you know, all hunky dory on the camera doesn't mean necessarily that I'm that way all the time, that there are frustrations and we are trying so, so hard to um to battle through and to accommodate as long as we're making the smart decision. Right, Winter? Right? Mm hmm. Say yes.
And I'm sure I speak for everybody, Pastor, when we say how very grateful we are to you and Jenny and Donna and Sandy and everybody for the work that you guys do in a whole new world. You know, there was no mapping that you didn't learn this in the seminary. Um, and you guys have done a great job. We're, we're, we're honored that you've done such a, a great job of continuing to do the worship. And keep the faith community together too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Um, Jenny and I definitely do feel the love and appreciation. So um thank you for showing up when we host Drive Through Communion and thank you for showing up when we have llamas in our parking lot for a live nativity and, you know. John, you have a question?
Yes, there's been an ad in the weekly blast that goes out that we're looking for additional members for the finance team. So if you guys find any of this interesting or have some further discussions on it, uh, we meet every month on it and talk about these numbers and pull our hair out a little bit, but uh
Yes.
Into the year, we tend to get healthy, which is freaky for 11 months. But uh you know, we could certainly use another set of eyes looking at it and another voice coming at it from another angle. So uh let us know if you're interested in joining.
Thank you for saying that, John. Um, one of the things we're also going to be doing right around the annual meeting is getting out an online kind of talents and gifts form. I think it's time to reevaluate kind of where people's interests lie. Um, and what's great about doing this online Google form is you would click the boxes and we'd be very specific of kind of where your interests lie. And then it will organize it for us in a spreadsheet and then. And then we can get those names out to members that are on those ministry teams so they can personally reach out and invite you. Because if you heard from my sermon today, personal invitation is the most efficient. And so just know that I don't want anybody to be scared to be like, oh, God, if I click this, I'm gonna get called on to help. But isn't that why you clicked it? Is so you can share that gift and be helpful in that way? None of the things that we ask you to do are huge commitments. And I think anybody can tell you that, whether it's counsel or whether it's finance or whether it is, I mean, whatever it may be. It is a shared ministry and so you're not in it alone. And if you need training on it, we will talk to you about it. If you have questions about any of it, but this time and talent kind of thing that we're gonna send out, I think will really be able to help us navigate who we can call on as far as if we need a electrician who has an electricity background or if someone is really informative on resources for Bible studies or, you know, things like that. So we can really be able to call on you personally, instead of being like, well, I don't know, who can we talk to that knows something about fish? Because we really want to do a fish fry for, I'm just, I'm just randomly pulling things, but you know what I mean? Like, so just allow yourself to be open when you do fill out that form. Don't lie to us about, you know, being good at things you're not. We don't have to worry about that with this group, but just be open to the opportunities of what this could present. So yes, we are looking at someone for finance. Again, you don't have to be good with numbers. We have a very great team already. So it's just helpful to get another set of eyes on it and just be a part of the conversation. So if you think that's you, if you feel like you're getting a tap on your shoulder about it, let us know. But are you raising your hand? Oh, are you tapping on my shoulder? Tap, tap, tap on anybody's shoulder? Okay.
Address Yvonne's question.
I was just gonna say, yes, Yvonne had a question.
It's so that Yvonne's question was how can we, how do we use the PPP money that we received? So we went through our bank first resource and they had very strict criteria, as did everybody, I hope, for the PPP loan. So what Susan had to do was we had to track separately those expenses that qualified. So all of the money that we received helped us cover our payroll costs. It could have been used for utilities as well, but then they kind of extended it. So Susan needed to send them our payroll receipts that shows how much we spent on payroll, that we kept our full staff employed during that time. And then we they forgave our PPP loan.
It wasn't just payroll, though. We did use it for our electricity and Walters, I believe, and the interest on our mortgage.
Yep.
And we had originally gone to Thrive It. Susan had gone to Thrive It and asked if we could pause our mortgage payment. And they did give us a three month pause. So we only paid them interest, but we accrued our mortgage principal payment. And then at the end of the year, when we knew we had enough money, we did go back and pay that. So we did not miss a mortgage payment this year.
Yeah, no, no, I'm I'm just, is there any anyone else wondering about our budget for the year, about giving about? We've done a great job of being transparent with one another this year with where we're at. I think we've been very open and honest and I want to continue to keep doing that. We have some great things in place to make sure that we are still connecting and engaging with one another. So be patient with us. But thank you already for your hard work so far and through 2020. We all know that it was one incredible year that we probably never want to mention ever again. But here's cheers to a new year. I'm remaining positive and hopeful. So if there's someone on here that you didn't see that maybe should know about this or that needs to be encouraged to come to the annual meeting. If you could, if everyone here could reach out to one person from the congregation to make sure that they're gonna be at our annual meeting. And if they're worried about connecting on Zoom, either you can help them or let us know that we can help them with that. We want to make sure that we have as many people at the annual meeting as possible, just so we can all be on the same page going forward. I think it's crucial. It's again, it's different because we're meeting on here and not in person. But hey, you'll come to the meeting in your pajamas. And this all puts us on the same plane as those who are in Florida right now and enjoying their warm weather. So Susan, your job is to contact Joanne and Skip and get them at the annual meeting. But yes. Yvonne, did you raise your hand or no, she was clapping, I think. She was clapping. Yes. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. So Jenny's, I'm gonna go unmute. Jenny's gonna try something really quick before we end.
So there is an option to do a polling on here and this is just like a little bit of an experiment so that this is the way that we can vote our annual meeting through. So I'm gonna launch it and it should pop up in front of you if it doesn't let me know as well. Did it go?
Do you like?
Yes.
No.
Just just put it out there as a random question, but yeah, you either you have to click yes or no.
Oh, I ended the polling. Sorry.
Oh.
Relaunch. I'm gonna relaunch. Relaunch it. Try again.
This is why she can't be in charge of the meetings.
Sorry. Well, I didn't know I had control over ending the polling.
Oh, oh, it even tells me, do you, are you seeing the results?
Yeah.
This is cool. All right.
Okay, click on it. Okay, 17 and 11. So it's 28. Who hasn't voted yet? Oh, I guess if there are two people, you can only vote once.
Yep.
So how do you do that?
I don't know. We're gonna have to figure that out. Okay, I'm ending it.
Okay.
I'm getting, okay. Interesting.
So what's the results, Jenny? What were the results?
Okay, thanks for helping with that. All right, go.
So we're gonna have to figure out a way for if there's multiple people in the home that are able to vote, how we can do that unless maybe we have to relaunch and do it twice or something. Maybe we do that.
Can it say, do you like snow? And then another question that's one, two, three or four? Can you do more than one question?
We'll play around with it. Yeah, but we'll make sure that you are able, that everyone will be able to have a chance to vote when we have to vote for annual meetings. I don't think we're gonna have too much to vote on. We'll have to vote for what do you need for?
Constitution has to be, yeah.
Yeah, constitution, new council members, the budget.
That's it.
Yeah, because we have to let sit a year. We voted on it last year and then you let it sit a year and then you have to revote again. You can come say hi. There's Henry. Everybody say hi.
Henry.
Jenny, you're right there.
I know, we're in the same room as that. Okay. I think that's all we have for the meeting. So one hour, that lasted awesome. Thank you for your questions and concerns and wonderings for that. Thank you for taking the time out of your day. We have very, very exciting things coming up as far as adult education, as far as Sunday School, as far as stewardship. Oh, Lent is gonna be so good. Oh, I just cannot wait. You guys, there are so many things in the works and we're gonna slowly release them to you. Winter, is there anything else that you want to say before we leave? Can she say anything, Mary? Hi, Winter, can you say something? Can you say, can you say bye?
I I think she wants to be here with me and Mary.
Oh, send her down to Florida. Yeah. Our sunglasses.
Say bye bye. Say bye bye.
I'll go to Florida.